The meeting to order. Would everyone please rise, face the flag, remove your head here, and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The only amendment that we would have on the agenda would be number eighteen. We can turn that in from.
Sixteen? Yours is different.
You got a late one. What's yours? Number eighteen, consideration to purchase outdoor pods. That'll be a discussion item, not a voting item. And other than that, there's no other additions, deletions, so I would look for a motion to approve the agenda as shown with that amendment. Motion by Mike.
A second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Schedule presenters. We're gonna flip-flop the robotics and Ed Foundation group, and we will begin with the robotics team.
So, we're here on behalf of the Cannon Falls Bomb Box, our robotics team. Before we go over some of the highlights from our season, we're just gonna go around, introduce ourselves, tell what grade we're in, and our role in the team. So I'm Kristi Allen, I'm a junior, and I'm our project manager, so I get to control everybody and tell them what to do.
Except for the coaches.
Sometimes, sometimes.
So I'm Izzy Sosa, I'm a senior this year, and I'm part of the software team.
I'm Sydney Speck, I am a tenth grader, I know that much, and I was the human player for the drive team.
I'm Nathan Benzallan, I'm a senior this year. This year I was drive coach, and I'm also the team's accountant as well, so that's fun.
I'm Sanskar Bhakta, I'm a junior, and I've kinda flirted around this year, I can help a little build and a little add inside as well.
I'm Xander Lynderich, I was in game strategy for the most part of the end of the season, and then I was otherwise on build team.
I'm Samuel Coyle, I'm a freshman, and I'm also in the software team.
I'm Wyatt Claybon, I'm a sophomore, and I'm on the build team.
I'm Samwager, I'm also a freshman, and I work on 3D CAD and so.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll go over a little bit about our season, if Izzy wants to do that.
Okay.
So, this year we have thirty students who participated in the robotics team. They went, it's our students from like ninth to twelfth grade, which eight of these thirty students were seniors. So, we're gonna lose a lot of our power last, next year, it's gonna be pretty sad. We had nine mentors this year, three primaries won, which Devon Enger-Bretson, Joe Coyle, and Branch Breeze. And I also have secondary is like Jack Shulley King, Brandon Jasmine, Philippa Hartley, Steve Auger, and Riley Schultz. So, to start, we had our kickoff season on January fifth, that we partnered with Red Wing, and we went there to watch the stream that they did on Twitch about how the game was going to be. So on that day, we figured out pretty much what we need to do on the game on February. So, the build season, we had six weeks to build our robot and program it, and after that, we needed to stop. So, it was, it was, due to these snow days, also I gotta say, it was pretty hard. I'm not blaming you, okay? I'm sorry.
It's okay, Izzy.
It was pretty tough to do this thing on, like, we did all these snow days and the weather. But I think we managed to do it pretty well, so that was pretty fun to do. And also a little bit stressed though, but that's, that's okay. Other week zero, it starts at February sixteen, and we went to Eagan with, aside with twenty-five other teams to do a practice. So we pretty much see like if our robot was going to work or not. That day was kind of a tough day because things were not going the way we planned a little bit, and they have like small problems that happened, and we didn't realize at the time. But I think we managed to fix that pretty well for our Duluth competition. So that was, that was an interesting day, honestly. On February nineteenth was the stop, was the stop week, stop build, so we needed to stop building, touching, and we needed to bag the robot. And yeah, so we, like, if we had any problems, we could not change it to the day we weren't Duluth. So that was, that was kinda tough, and also was a rough day on the February nineteenth, the last practice. So we had our Minnesota Regional in Duluth on March seventh until March nine. And we partner, we partnered again with Red Wing to travel with them, so we just went. We got our coach balls, and then we went there with them. And on that season, on that day, I think during that competition, we ranked thirteenth out of sixty-three teams that were there. That was quite good for us. The first few matches, we were kinda having some problems, again, some small problems that we didn't realize at the beginning. And some things that we did that was probably not the best idea to do, and we learned from mistakes to the Iowa Regional on the next two weeks later that. So on March, from March twenty-fourth to March twenty-third, we had our Iowa Regional, which we ranked twenty-first out of forty-eight teams. That was kinda like a bummer, I gotta say, because, I mean, we fixed most of this stuff, but we don't, there was, I think, like two or three matches that our robot was not working, and no one knew why, and we just didn't move at all. And it was just a problem with the software, I believe. So that was kinda sad for us, because every other team was moving, and then one match we won because another team, I don't remember their number right now, it just carried the entire group, so that was pretty nice of them. But yeah, we ended up ranking twenty-first out of sixty-three teams. Another thing that I forgot to mention, Duluth, we were not selected for the, I'm gonna say the, yeah, for the finals. So, that was pretty sad, because we got like thirteenth out of sixty-three teams, and no one chose us. And we, still we got to go as a, as an end.
As a reserve.
Yeah, reserve, and also no one picked us, so that was, that was really sad. Got really mad actually, but yeah, it's fine. And when we got like twenty-first out of forty-eight teams, we got picked, that was, we were really happy, I remember my reaction on that, I was screaming. It was, it was a fun day. And we, well, we lost on the part of finals matches, which again was pretty sad, we didn't go too far on the on the regional one, but it was okay. And also that day, we won the gracious professionalism award with, for us, I believe, was a really great thing. That is the award, I don't know if she, yeah. So that was pretty cool for us, because I think like four years, the past four years, robotics team for Cannon Falls didn't receive an award, so this year we received our first award, and was, is one of the most, like gracious professionalism awards, like one of the most, I don't know.
Coveted?
Yeah.
Prestigious.
Prestigious awards for the first, so that was, that was really nice, yeah. So, a couple items that we have this year, so our project manager was introduced using ZenHub and Slack. So we tried to use new tools to communicate with the team, and organize like our work and our to-do list with the robot. That was pretty nice using ZenHub, that's a pretty much a software online. And I gotta say, helped us a lot, and also using Slack for communication was really helpful from what we need to do, and like just sending a couple links to everyone and say, "Oh, we have practices today, someone can come," and something like that, that was really nice. Accounting, so we moved from spreadsheet to Intuit QuickBooks, which, I'm sorry, I cannot talk too much about that because I wasn't on that part for.
It was just a good thing.
Sorry?
It was a good thing.
It was a good thing, yeah.
I gotta learn how to use QuickBooks this year, which is pretty fun, and it was, oh, I think it was a pretty efficient system for tracking our money, it was a lot more efficient than Excel was, so it was nice to learn a new tool too as well.
And this year, we use, we create a web application, which is our scouting app. We use HTML, PHP, W2, and IBM Cloud to create that. I got, I worked on that website with, outside with my coaches. I gotta say, I spent like a month and a half trying to program that thing. I went to bed, and I was like almost crying some nights because it was so hard, and I was like, I had no idea I was really wrong, and it wasn't working. I didn't manage to work, to make that work for Duluth Regional, but for Iowa, it was pretty functional. Although we had some problems with the server, somehow some people could not connect to the website, so that was really sad, honestly. But it was working, I was really happy that, I mean, when we tried for the last time, and the website actually worked, I was, oh my god, it was, it was, I relieved.
I think, well, I think one of the main reasons why we actually got selected for the finals was in part because of the scouting app, I mean, a part of my team is drive coach, is I had to go out and be a representative for the team, and I had to go talk to other teams, and so being able to have in my hand all the stats from every single team at the competition was just amazing, and say, this team did five hatch panels per game, and this team did X amount of cargo, was just amazing, and it helped us a lot, and I think it actually helped us get selected in the end, so it was a big asset to the team.
Oh, I just realized, I didn't say what the scouting app does. So it's pretty much a compilation of data, so we grabbed like each robot that we had there from which school they were, and we started putting data there, so like, as Nathan said, oh, during this match, match number, I don't know, match number three on the qualifications, they did like three cargos, and they played defense, and they also could turn back to the level three on the, so that was nice, and it was just pretty much inputting data, and looking at a data table to see which one was their best choice at the end. And also this year, we use CAD CAM, so it's improved, okay, so it also improves our use with SolidWorks, we worked more on that. And we also started using Mastercam for doing like part of our robots, sorry, doing part of our robots and all the stuff, so that was really nice. Also used it to design the pit, to do the pit design, we use SolidCam, that is pretty much a 3D, like 3D modeling software. So, we learned a lot of things here. Yeah, it's pretty much that from the introduction.
Alright, so along with being the drive coach and then other things, and the treasurer, I'm also the team's, one of the team's admin captains along with Zoe Jess. And so, the job of admin team is to try and get money, try and get our name out there, basically to build a brand of Team Sixty-One Seven. And so, we, a lot of the things we couldn't have, a lot of the things we did this year that Izzy all mentioned throughout the season, I mean, going to the second regional in Iowa, we wouldn't have been able to do without our sponsors. One of our biggest team sponsors was Gemini, they gave us a lot of, a lot of money this year, I think, nine thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars this year to go towards our robot, our getting to Duluth, transportation, everything, anything we needed. And along with that, they also provided a lot of help and support in the engineering of the robot, we had a few guys come over, I think Riley is his name, came over from Gemini and helped us quite a bit this year. That was a big asset to the team, to have just another brain with us, helping us solve the game and crack the code. And then, also, they provided us some nice LED lighting, I don't know if any of you were able to see pictures of our sign for the, in the pit, but they were able to get the sign to light up and do a bunch of things, I don't even know how they did it all, but it's just, it was really cool to see. I think it was on the Duluth local news channel, and we were on that for like a clip, we were on TV for a very short amount of time, but it was pretty cool, and it was cool to see all, all that work play out, pay off. IBM was another sponsor, team funding. FlexCraft this year was a big sponsor, so what they did for us is, well, basically they provided materials for us to build our battery cart and then our sign, so our sign is easy to put up and take down now, and it looks amazing. It's sleek, it's, just looks, looks really great. And then our battery cart as well, it's, we, our old battery cart, not that it was horrible, but it wasn't the best. It's kind of a clunky thing, but the new one we had was nice and easy to move, and it wasn't gonna like break your leg if it ran into you. But it was, that was, that was really cool to have FlexCraft work with us. Banks Outdoors provided funding, Strike Tool provided some funding as well. Why Pair? Is that how you say it?
Whiplane? Or no, Whip Bear.
Whip Bear. Whip Bear. That, the carbon fiber sides on here, this covers up all of our electronics and pneumatic systems, so they provided those for us. No charge, right? They completely, they were completely free for us, and that was a big help, I mean, they looked great on the side, and it saved us a lot, because if people were running into our electronics, then we wouldn't be able to have the robot move anymore. So that was a great, great addition to it. Interstate Building Supply provided all the, or some of the lumber, and same with Quality One woodworking, for building our game materials. Prototyping, things like that, just, I guess whatever we needed, they had it there for us. And then we had Red Wing Area Manufacturers, team funding, Startech has team funding, Allied Valve, team funding, and then I think we have a few things on there from Allied Valve, right? A few of our mechanisms? No, okay, nevermind. And then 3M, we got new safety glasses this year, and then we also gotta meet with the 3M plant manager in Red Wing next week, is what we're, is when we're meeting with them, so that'll be awesome, and another great opportunity to hopefully get a little bit more funding. And then this year, another great thing was the CNC mill, so not only was this an asset for our team, but it's also an asset for the school as well. A lot of the funding that went into that came from a lot of places in town, specifically this Ed Foundation helped to purchase that. That helps speed up the process a lot, because we didn't have to rely on other places to mill our materials, we could just mill it in-house. And then it was right there for us, and granted, it did take some time, but it was in-house, so we didn't have to go out and get it from someone else. Zephyr also helped with the CNC mill, they shipped it, and they helped us with the rigging of it. Henkel Foundation helped provide some funding for it as well. The BD Extreme provided some of the tools that go in it, so different milling tools, different bits, things like that. And then Cannon Falls Fire Department provided devices for it, so what actually holds the pieces in place, so they don't wobble all over the place while they're going. And then the Cannon Falls Rotary Club also provided some funding to help get that CNC mill up and running. That's my portion of it, Sanskar.
Alright, well, as a robotics team, we also do a lot of community outreach, and we advocate for STEAM, and push towards a STEAM field of work. So, every summer, we have a week-long Lego camp for elementary schoolers, usually about first, and then sometimes through eighth grade, but usually like first through sixth grade. And then, that's usually, as a team, as us students, we kind of plan that we run the entire event, help the kids with building their Lego robots, and helping them, run them to perform the game. And then, it's also a fundraiser for our travel expenses, whenever we go to places like Duluth or Iowa, that's kind of a way to help us pay for getting to those places. Another thing that we do a lot is go demo at the elementary school, during the school year, we usually out of one, one day out of the year, we go and present the robot after it's done being built, before the competitions, to second through fifth graders during their school days, so, and that's usually also a community outreach to get them kind of, kind of recruit them for our robotics team in the future, and kind of build interest for our robotics program. And as well, we're gonna go to the Elementary Science Night, which is tomorrow night, and again, kind of showcase our robot and build that kind of interest for robotics and STEM itself. And then, we do a lot of community, community promotion throughout our community, and kind of demonstrate what STEM can do, and what our robotics program can do. So we go to like the Chamber of Commerce Mill Street event, we go to the Cannon Valley Fair in the summertime, Cannon Falls Rotary. And then, this year we're trying something new, and we're doing offseason competition, so about mid-September, right after about school starts. We actually go, we're gonna go down to Woodbury, and we're gonna kind of play the game all over again, and that's kind of a new way for, that's kind of a way for new members of our team to experience the robotics kind of competition, the kind of atmosphere of it, and also learn things about the robotics program that usually they'll probably learn later in the year, but they get a chance to learn everything now, kind of find their place within the team that way, so.
Alright. So, this year's theme was deep space, it was kind of made to celebrate the fiftieth year anniversary for the lunar landing. And during this game, we have some objectives, we needed to leave a habitat, we needed to pick up, be able to pick up these plexiglass panels. We also wanted to be able to, be able to manipulate the cargo, which is this thirteen-inch round kickball-looking-like thing. And then we also wanted to be able to return to the habitat after the game was completed. So, in the beginning few seconds of the game, you had to leave this habitat, which was a three-tiered little area. The second level was three inches off of the main one, and then the third level was nine inches, oh, sorry, off of the main one or second one? Second one. And it was, you know, it was just this little, I'd kind of like to state it as like a three-tiered cake, you just wanna try to get up as high as you can, because that's where the better points are. After you get through the sandstorm, which was the point to where your drivers couldn't see out in the field, you had to either use autonomous, or you had to have a camera on your robot to see the field. After that got done, you went into this teleop period where you got to manipulate the cargo as much as you could. This is the, I'd call it the exchange, I don't know what they called it this year. But you were able to put in these cargos up top to feed your robot, or you could drop panels down through the main area, and then you could get it onto the rocket, that's what it's called, and you had to be able to input cargo into these holes, and to stick hatch panels on these sides. After, like I said, you just have to return to the hab platform, the more points you got depended on how high up you went. And yeah, the, I guess this year was just pretty chill, it was really competitive, I was really surprised on how competitive it was. Defense was a huge break, make or break kind of deal, it was a very low-scoring match, very low-scoring matches, and yeah. Be good, for you.
So the thing that really sets robotics apart from the other sports and activities and other extracurriculars would be the gracious professionalism. So, this year was our first year of actually receiving this award, and really any award. This one right here, it's all nice and glass and everything, we get this directly from first itself, and then they give them out about every tournament to one specific team, that's a little plaque we got as well. We won this one because we tried to implement a new system of helping other teams this year, we called it a SWAT team, because it's, yeah. We have this bomb theme, so we had bomb squad go around, and we got like police vests and everything, so we just nicknamed it the SWAT team. Their entire goal was to go around and help other teams if they had any technical failures or anything like that. So basically, anyway, we just wanted to go help our, I guess, competitors. So, that really helped us get the award this year. The best thing about robotics, in my opinion, is that a lot of people there, even though they're not on your team and they're competitors, they really just want to help you and watch you do well, as long as they do well too. So, the best thing is that like, if one team needs parts or something, or if they need, say like, software help, Izzy was one of the people that helped and everything. If they needed help with some of that, they'd either go ask another team, and they'd just ask the front desk, they put up on a loudspeaker, "Hey, this team needs some metal," and then we'd go over and get them some metal or something like that. In fact, one of these teams, the Cass Lake team, we met them at the Duluth Regional Competition. They only had twenty minutes until they had to go to their next competition, or their next match, and we sent over a few of us, like software people, Izzy and Isaiah. Yeah, so we had two of our top software people go over, and we helped them get ready and actually be able to move about twenty minutes before they started competing, so that was really nice of us, and helped us get our name out and everything. And it's a really friendly competition, as she was saying, it was, it does get pretty competitive when you're in the match, but outside of that, everyone just really just wants to be your friend, and it's pretty nice. Do anything else, or are you just gonna drive the robot? I mean, I could talk about.
I have a question.
How would one play defense in robotics?
So, in defense.
Run other people's robots over?
So, anyone ever seen BattleBots?
Next year, I'll give you the link to watch online, it's remarkable, you can sit at home with popcorn and your computer and watch these guys the entire time. And Mikey would just die when they come in, because these robots will come through and they block them, it's just a defensive game. I was really surprised when I watched that as well.
So one of the things that we have to be careful of when we were playing defense is we have to make sure all of our arms and whatever else we have on the robot are, is inside the frame parameter. It's like the arm is down right now in the front, and you can't have that happening when you're playing defense. You need to have everything inside the frame parameter, otherwise you get penalized, and then also, it's three seconds you get, right? Five seconds. I'm a little rusty right now, it's been a little bit, it's been a little bit, but you get five seconds to pin them, and then you have to back up before you can initiate another pin. So it's not like you're just ramming into them, I mean, there is a little bit of that, but it's just, there's, there's a little bit more strategy to it. And our drivetrain actually helps us play defense great, we have swerve drives, so what that is, it's four independently moving wheels, and it gives us a lot of strength in pushing other robots, so as compared to a drivetrain like a McCannum Wheels where those are, it gives them more mobility, but we can push them around really easily usually, because they don't have a lot of traction. But, our drivetrain is specifically built for, or better built for defense because of the way it is, I guess, yeah.
And we can move, so we can move in more directions than only one at a time, so for most drivetrains, they're only on a track. So if you wanna move forward, you can move to the side as well. With us, we can spin, and we can move in different directions, we'll show you that in a bit.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
Use twist and you go.
Any other questions?
I got a question, so each year, do you start from scratch, or are you continuing to build on this?
So, basically, every year, you can't have the same robot twice, I guess, so this is our year's robot, and next year, we'll have to strip it completely down and start completely fresh with a new game and all.
We can use the parts. Use the parts, yeah. And the game, game strategy, and the game rules and elements are different every year anyway, so it makes it.
They also like to change up what software they use each year. That's, that makes it fun for the software team, so it's not like they're, they get it done.
We got too used to using C++. I had them use Java this year.
Yeah. So, we, they, we change things up every year.
Any other questions? Do we take about five minutes to do a quick demo? Do you think we want to drive it?
Is it insured?
Or she was driving?
You got a wife.
Nathan, are you driving?
I can drive, I've never driven before.
I think Nathan wants to do this.
I've never driven before, so.
So the communication from the computer to the robot, it's just a Wi-Fi, there's a white box, it's just like Wi-Fi in your house. So it's Wi-Fi connection from his laptop to there, there's a main processor on there. He'll have two joysticks or two controllers hooked up to his computer, one is a joystick that's gonna control driving, and then the other one is an Xbox controller that they program and decide what the buttons are gonna be used for. So Xander's gonna be right, driving, doing the Xbox controller, he'll be able to control the lift going up and down, the tilt of the lift, the spitting out of the hatch panels and the balls, we also use it for lifting ourselves off the ground. Sydney talked about the platforms at the end and being able to climb, we were able to climb up to the nine-inch one, we weren't able to get to the top one, but we had a mechanism. We can show you at the end, kind of how we did it, we don't have something to climb up on, but we can show you how we did it. Enabling?
It's not connecting.
Izzy, would you break this thing? Oh. And we'll pick it up. Watch it.
Better day?
Better day.
Better day? No, we lost. It's a battery.
Did you grab one of the bad batteries? Did we grab the one that said dummies?
Is it gonna enable, Sam? Not yours?
I have blue dog tape. It says Duluth.
Nathan, Xander was up and down, so it's really, it's a two-person job.
Yep.
Yeah, by the rules, you can have two drivers, and then there's other help on the field, like Maple's kind of the overall captain, and Sydney managed the game pieces.
I was there yelling at them, when, well, my main job as drive coach, what it evolved into was me yelling at them, telling them to get back at thirty seconds. Like, cause like, as soon as I start saying something, they're already doing it, so I'm basically there as a reminder of the thirty-second mark. That's basically was my job, and then I was sitting there yelling at them, and they probably blocking out the entire time, but.
Good?
Try one more time.
Am I that good? See it?
Like, cause like as soon as I start saying something, they're already doing it. So I'm basically there as a reminder of the 30-second mark. And that's basically was my job. And then I was sitting there yelling at them and they probably blocking out the entire time, but.
Good? Try one more time. I told you guys I'm not, I'm not. Alright. Alright. Ready? Alright, so one more thing to show would be just how we would climb. Can you, can you lower those wheels?
Yeah, I can do that. Get back up a little bit.
So just imagine there's kinda like a step platform of on the gray wheels on the front. Oh, can you lower the gray wheels still or no?
Yes, A and B.
A and B?
Or A and B.
Maybe.
Are they me?
No. So this would lift up the front end of the robot? And then you'd use those matic cylinder in the back to lift up the back end. Any other questions at all? You guys are welcome to drive it sometime. Thank you guys. Okay. Let's move forward on our second scheduled presenter. That would be the CF, CF, Cannon Falls Ed Foundation.
Ed Foundation. I guess I gave you this. I just kinda outlined what the foundation is. Most of you know, I guess, what we do. Our board is 20, 24 people, 100% volunteers. We provide funding for creative innovative programs that are above and beyond what the school provides with their dollars. Teachers bill out requests. Has to be approved by either the elementary or the high school principal before it comes to us. Any money we raise, we raise, one-third of all the funds go into an endowment. And two-thirds goes to our program requests for the next year. Since the foundation started in 93, we've given over a million dollars to the students at Cannon Falls. The goal was always to have an endowment of over one million dollars. And in 2016, we got a donation of over 500,000 from the Grace Elaine Wilcox Trust, which was amazing. That put our endowment over 1.3 million. And our program budget for each year is kinda listed below. And you can see how that contribution has doubled our budget every year going forward. It took a while. We got the, that donation kind of in a couple lumps. That's why it kinda went up just a little bit for 16 and a little bit more for 17 and then we had the full amount for the 18, 19 budget. On the second page, you can see what we have funded in the last couple years. A lot of, or the, the requests come from both elementary and high school, which is nice. A lot of, some of them are repeat year to year. I think Eagle Bluff is always kind of a repeat, but it's different kids, so. And you can see that CNC vertical milling machine was just this year. We contributed over 14,000 to that. The, the largest, largest program request we ever had was over 150,000 that we just granted to Amy Donback for classroom redesign, seating, electronics. And it will affect every student, elementary, high school, everywhere. And I don't really know what she's bought. She can speak to that. I think some of it's coming this year, most of it.
Yep, most of it's coming this year. Next year, we'll have a smaller portion, about third. So it'll be 150,000 this year, 50,000 next. And it was primarily for, for furniture. One of the things that's happened and the Ed Foundation has come through and kinda filled that gap where, you know, we have lab, we don't have labs anymore, but we still have a need where we have students using a CNC machine in the, in the ag industrial tech area. And we need those computers in order to be able to have that program. So they came through and put a lab together. My request for, for furniture was just kinda looking at how students should be learning within a, in a classroom and not being fixed any longer in, in a singleton desk that we are gonna have tables and whatever, high-rise seating, be able to move things around, everything's gonna be on casters. So we're gonna be able, be able to basically to redesign a room and every two minutes, you could have a different redesign if you wanted to. So you could have stations and you could move things around if you want, so. And then that is going towards kindergarten, second through fifth grade. Classrooms are all getting updated. And then the high school, about 14, 14 different classrooms with some extra seating and things like that. And I, I will tell you, it's the, the thing I didn't think, you know, when you think about technology and, and classroom, 21st century learning, that's how I presented it to the Ed Foundation. It's really about creating a different learning environment within the room that allows you to learn anytime, kind of anywhere. So amazing that, and I'm hoping when we come back in the fall, we can do a kind of a walk through and do a school board meeting where you get, get to see what, what that looks like. Cause I can tell you that's gonna change walking down the hallway. It's gonna be, be different. And now your teachers are really excited about it. So they're talking about what that's gonna do for their classroom experiences, so, yeah. So very grateful for the generosity of the Ed Foundation.
And that, I mean, that wasn't like in our budget this year. And we had some money left for this year. So what we did is we took 50,000 from our, our 18, 19 budget. And then we committed 50,000 from our 19, 20 budget to them. And then some rearranging of some other funds to give for the 150, all at one time. For pricing, you know, makes it better when you're buying quantity, so. So I don't know if you have any other questions or?
You know, what you just stated is you strive to be creative with your funding to help other kids, to help other community.
Yeah.
You just can't measure things like that. Everything that you've done for us was probably on a wish list.
Right. And you know, since we've gotten that big donation, you know, we have seen a few donors maybe back off a little bit because they think, well, you have a million dollars, you know, but we're using it to, you know, our budget is double every year. And in this case, we finagled a little bit to give even more, you know. But, but we'll get through that, so. But, and then, well, I don't know. We also had, at our last meeting, we approved, we had some memorial money from Linda Linder. That was, the family specified that it be spent at the elementary because she was an elementary teacher. And we kinda were holding it, just kinda waiting for something to come through that would match maybe what they wanted. And it wasn't coming through. So I think Kelly Britno went, Britno, still calling her Britno. She went to Ms. Chapey and asked if, you know, they could come up with anything. And she did send some ideas and we approved them at the last meeting. Part of it is a character book set. I don't know if it's a specific character or, oh, main character's a dragon, so it must be something specific. A sensory path, which would be painted on the blacktop. There was a link to a YouTube video, it was kinda cool, painted outside. Rock boxes, like a sandbox, to be used for students who love to move things with Tonka trucks. And there were four third grade boys who pitched the idea to their teacher. So we for sure wanted to do that one. We love when the kids come up with the ideas and ask for it, so. And then I think too, apparently there's a crosswalk in the median at the elementary that has grass, but it's mostly mud most of the time. And so they're gonna do like a paver project where each classroom maybe paints a paver. Maybe we let the Linder family do a couple papers or something and make that pavers, so. So that's where that's gonna go. That was the newest one, so.
You know, you fly under the radar screen to some degree. You, you promote our school and you don't ask for any acknowledgement or anything else. You just do what you do for us.
Yeah. We're trying to be better about putting it out there when we do do something to get the recognition and, you know, we got a big check now. And so when we, the month when we approve things, we're putting the dollar amount and sending it to the beacon. Here's what we donated today to the school for these projects, you know, just showing people what we do. We don't just sit on a million dollars and do nothing.
Very dedicated group and they put in so much time. It's a great asset to the school, to the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Next time. Okay, this is not a report meeting, so we'll skip the administrative reports as well as the committee reports. Consideration to prove the finance report. Mr. Davison?
It's easier to get up than stand with a podium. So I've got the short and sweet version here, page four of the agenda packet. At the top, you'll see the bank balances as of the printing of the agenda, the 15th. About 1.9 million dollars roughly in cash. A few things to note as we go through here, and this would just go through the rest of the fiscal year. In the office now, we've got the approved budget for the preliminary fiscal year 20. I'll start putting together the full fiscal year 20 cash flow worksheet, but this will have you through the end of this fiscal year. Some things to note, on the left-hand side, you see the Invenergy. There's two payments we receive for Invenergy funding. One for directly to the school from Invenergy and one from the city through Invenergy. Between the two, about $310,000. And as we've talked about in the past, we earmark those dollars each year towards the elementary roof lease project. And that lease about a balance of about $140,000 each year that goes to the general fund. We've got about six, eight years left of those funds that are guaranteed. And then part of what we'll do is go through the old, when the agreement was set in place with Invenergy, what's gonna happen when that falls off? Do they go onto the tax roll or is it something after renegotiate? So that'll be in conversation as we go through finance meetings. Other things to note, there's a 2015A, that's a debt service payment. As we, most of our debt service payments go out in February. And this one was just refunded and timed a little bit differently, so a little odd to see one in the end of May, beginning of June, but that's what that is about. Goodyear County taxes, we'll be receiving later this week, notification from both Goodyear County and Dakota County on the exact dollar amount, right now they're estimated. But when we get to the second page of the financial report, we talk about where we're at for receiving funds for, say, debt service revenue. A lot of our levy funds go towards the debt service. And the last thing to note is elementary roof. As we talked about with Invenergy funds, you'll see a $79,000 payment. That's one half of the annual payment to pay for the elementary roof lease, lease payment. And that goes out in mid-June. The second page is just, as we talked about, this is a recommendation by audit and good practice for us to kinda keep an eye ball of where we're at in terms of you approve a budget, where are we at in terms of revenues received and expenditures gone out so far. So what you'll see there in the first column is the revenue budget amounts for fiscal year 19 that's been approved. Second column would be year to date. And then we have it through the last month reconciled to be April 30th. So we got 10 out of 12 months. So roughly you'll figure out, if you're looking at these percentages, if you were to go just simple math, about 83% we should have received in either revenue or expense. It doesn't always tie out exactly into a school because the school is really in operation during the nine months, although technically you're gonna see a lot of people around in the summer doing a lot of work. That's where a lot of the stuff gets done in terms of facility and whatnot. So a lot of times what we'll see when we talk about these things and expenditures, you'll see general fund about 76%, whereas you would maybe expect it to be 83. The reason we lag behind a little bit right now is because payroll for teaching staff, although it goes through August 15th, those July 15th, July 30th, August 15th payrolls are put back into fiscal year 19. And that's just how the contract works. So even though we lag a little bit behind now, it catches up real fast as we get into the summer months. The other thing to kinda note is that we talked about in the top, the debt service revenue is about 50% for both the OPEB and the regular debt service. As you see, we talked about the county taxes. When we receive those now, at the end of this week, beginning of next week, those revenue amounts will go back to where we budgeted amount for. And again, that's a timing thing. The expenditures go out, we have a fund balance and reserve for debt service, so we're able to make those payments as they come due and then the revenue comes in to fill in. Not real spectacular information for finance meeting as we're gearing up now towards the end of the year and closing out the year, but if you have any questions for what's presented, I can truly answer what I can.
The close-up of the year, the codes are audit.
Correct.
And that comes usually in October-ish?
Yeah, you know, and we can try to push it a little bit quicker. I think we're in a pretty good spot right now in terms of having things up to date that if I can get them in here at end of July, beginning of August, we can push it up a little bit quicker to get it. Ideally, mid, late September, I think, would be a nice way to get that wrapped up. But generally, we wait till July or June 30th, that's the end of the fiscal year. There are some wrap-up things. We don't usually get our last ideas, payments, sometimes until October, but at least we'll have a good idea of what we're gonna get, so it's easier to kinda extrapolate what we're gonna need to put in for audit. So I think that'd be the goal. My personal, I'd like to try and not get it into that October, November. If we can get it done earlier for you, we'll try to do that, so that'd be the goal.
I can really help with negotiations. We ran into that a couple of years ago here in November to keep it around the board. Sometimes having that audit done just gives you a lot of transparency when you're in with negotiations and stuff as well. So I agree, waiting to November, it's just, sometimes the auditors are booked out that far.
It goes from a number that we kinda realize that it is probably going to be, to, it's in paper, so it's legit and easy to see, so. Yep, I agree, we'll push it as, as quickly as we can.
Any other questions, Ron? If not, I would look for a motion to approve the finance report as stated.
I'll make a motion.
Katie on the motion, Bill on the second. Other discussion. All in favor of the approval of the finance report, say aye. Opposed? Carrie. Consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted under one motion. In the event a board member wants to discuss any one item, it can be removed and treated on a separate action.
The one item I am passing out is an addition. You did a last minute for We the People. The list that you see there are the businesses that have donated. So it was an addition to the donation sheet.
Significant.
Other than that, there's no additions or changes.
We had a couple of gifts I see as well, some years we have, or some months we have many. So once you've had a chance to review the consent agenda items, I would be looking for a motion to approve. So move. Move by Mike.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie.
I do have one comment. I just wanna thank Emery very much. If you've met him, he's been in our auditorium. He has been remarkable. I know Amy can shake her head yes to this as well. We were in a time of almost crisis where we didn't know for sure with this beautiful auditorium and all this wonderful technology and all these things, and we didn't have the right people in place. And Emery came to us like a gift. And he just came in and he lives a block away, would walk down when we had emergency things or any of that. So I just really wanna acknowledge.
Other than that, there's no additions or changes.
We had a couple of gifts, um, I see as well. Some years we have, or some months we have many. So once you've had a chance to review the consent agenda items, I would be looking for a motion to approve. So move. Move by Mike.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie.
I do have one comment. I just want to thank Emery very much. If you've met him, he's been in our auditorium. He has been remarkable. Um, I know Amy can shake her head yes to this as well. We were in a time of almost crisis where we didn't know for sure with this beautiful auditorium and all this wonderful technology and all these things. And we didn't have the right people in place. And Emery came to us like a gift. And he just came in and he lives a block away. We'd walk down when we had emergency things or any of that. So I just really want to acknowledge tonight that he is resigning from that position. I think he wants to just drive bus and do those things. So he helps us in so many ways. Uh, but I certainly need to acknowledge someone that really stepped up to the plate, um, when we needed him. And I, he's still going to be there for us, um, but it was very nice to have him these last few years.
Yeah, really put things together for us when you needed it. You're right.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any other discussion? All in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. We have no old business under action items, under new business, consideration to approve the designation of identified official with authority for the MDE External User Access Recertification System.
Yeah, better known as the Iowa. Uh, my new school district did this last month for me. You're going to want to do this for your new superintendent. Um, you're going to want to read this exact resolution that's on here. It's very specific when it goes to MDE. We're going to also add Lori Hansen. It gives you that second line of if we need to add anything, um, she's able to go into the system and do that as well. Um, it, it's a good idea. I think most districts have two people that can do that. So, um, I'm not sure who reads the resolution, but you can read that.
That's from the beginning of the Minnesota?
Yes, okay.
The Minnesota Department of Education requires that school districts annually designate an identified official with authority to comply with that M-NIT Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all user access rights to Minnesota state systems must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The identified official with authority will assign job duties and authorize external users' access to MDE's secure systems for their local education agency. The board recommends to authorize Jeff Sampson to act as the identified official with authority and Lori Hansen to act as the Iowa to add and remove names only for Cannon Falls Area School District 252.
We'll make a motion in a second to approve that, and then we'll take a roll call, both from Katie. Motion. Motion by Mike.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. So I see the term LEA in there.
That's the Local Education Agency.
You remember that.
Yeah, I remember it, but this almost seems like kind of a redundancy a little bit.
Well, you've, you've got to transfer it from me. You just did it for me in January. Because when you do that every January, uh, being there's a new superintendent coming out, you want this transferred over. Your next board meeting is June 24th. Gets a little close to that transition time. Um, St. Francis and St. Cannon Falls are both deciding to do it now, which I think is smart. Just so it's ready to go. I will have access until, um, June 30th. And then Jeff will have, he'll be doing the same thing in Southland because he already has access to the system. You don't want two accounts. He'll transfer over and it's, it works very smoothly if you do it this way.
Sure.
All right, so roll call. Bob?
Yes.
Anna? Yes. Bill?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Katie? Yes.
It passes by a five-zero vote. Huge. Brenda had to, had to leave for another commitment somewhere, so just to let you know that she just didn't get out and leave us. Number two, technology summer work stipend of $3,500 for fiscal year 20.
Right, um, just as in the FFA position, the stipend, anyone that works in the summer. Um, I'm not a big fan of collecting hours because then it kind of leaves it open-ended. You never know when that can end or not. Um, this can be on the low side for people that put a lot of hours in the summer. But, um, it, it just seems like the most comparable way to do it. Um, the FFA stipend was 3,500. Uh, we're going to also have $3,500 for the technology. There's so much with the new furniture coming in and the three leases that you see coming up here. Uh, there's just a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, to designate that to summer help doesn't work. It has to be to the director. So it would be my recommendation to do a stipend of 3,500, uh, would be paid at the end of the summer. Um, if the job is not complete, the stipend will not be paid.
The fiscal year 20?
Yep, that's at the end of the summer because you're already going into 20.
And it comes out of the technology budget, the personnel?
It does.
So I'd look for a motion to approve.
Second.
Anna on the motion.
I'll second.
Seconded by Katie. Further discussion? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve 19, 1920 Dell Chromebook quote for student devices.
Okay, these next three items, um, nothing's new on them. One of them does have a corrected, uh, quote page for the Apples. I'm going to pass that out as well. Um, I know you need to vote on them individually. These are all in our technology plan and our five-year plan and our rotation. The cost of the devices have actually come down. There's some savings in there because we know that some technology pieces have just gotten cheaper. Um, and we are no longer having, um, the equipment for our K through two. We're having those things on a cart and things like that. So there is some cost savings in there. If you have any exact questions on the quotes, I'll turn those over to Amy. Um, but I would recommend all three of these. They're in the plan. Um, our elementary teachers are the teachers that are getting the new, um, books, uh, MacBooks. Uh, I believe they are six to seven years old. I have one of them as well. Uh, we've, we've definitely gotten our use out of them. So my recommendation would be to pass the next three items.
Amy, would you like to speak to these?
Yeah, I just want to clarify that I know I was just here in April and we just approved some of their Chromebooks. One of the things that happened since that last time is a lease agreement, which usually we get like a four-month warning that a lease agreement is coming to an end. Well, that happened right after the board meeting. And, um, turns out I thought that lease was on dollar buyout and it is not. Um, in order for us to keep those items, retain them, it's $140. And there are three, three-year-old item. So we decided to just move up. What Beth kind of talked about, this is in our five-year plan. We're going to move things up and purchase them this year. And that will allow us to kind of continue, um, kind of with the plan that we have. And then, uh, we will actually shift product down into lower grades like this year's for the upper, you know, make sure seniors will be getting a brand-new device. We'll shift that down into the elementary school then. And then we will not need to purchase for that grade level. So we're just going to be, um, moving things around. And, and I got to see at the tech meeting, my, my crazy, uh, de- device fleet rotation cycle, if you ever want to check that out sometime. Yeah. So, um, yeah, that's basically what it's about. The, the 25 for the computer lab at the elementary school, there's still a lot of testing going on, um, in, in the computer lab. And, and it's the younger grades. We need a device for them to sit at. We can use a Chromebook because almost everything is out on the internet now. We don't need to download programs onto a PC. So we're not going to get a $500 device. We're going to get a $200 device instead. And, um, Deanne Coleman's been using that, um, in the elementary school for her lab. Works very, very slick. And the MacBooks, like, like Beth spoke to, we've gotten our very good use out of them. And that's just the replacement device for, for the elementary teachers.
Amy, do these have USB ports on them or is it all that new stuff?
Yep, no, it's all going to be, uh, uh, Google actually mandated. But every Chromebook from here on out is going to be a USB charger. And it doesn't matter what, if we go Dell this year and let's say we go HP with, you know, one grade level in the future or whatever, they're all going to work on. Those chargers are all going to work. Uh, MacBooks have an interesting little charger. Yep.
Does that interfere with, do kids use USB ports to shove stuff back and forth?
And it, and it's only, only for teachers. Teachers are the only ones getting the MacBooks. Yep. And we've already kind of, uh, planned for an adapter that we need, are going to need to get them. Yeah, that's, we, yeah, we're okay with it. It works.
Amy, you're on tech. You've, uh, you've got these things. Everything's good. You recommend this from the tech.
Yep, I do.
All right, number three, consideration to approve the 1920 Dell Chromebook quote. Looking for a motion. So move. Oh, go ahead. I'll second that.
So move.
Anna on the motion, Mike on the second. Any other conversation, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the 1920 Dell Chromebook quote for elementary computer lab. It's an extension of our last conversation.
So move.
Moved by Anna, seconded by, do they hear Mike?
Yeah.
Other discussion?
So these Chromebooks, can I ask you a question, Amy?
Yeah, go for it.
So these Chromebooks, the ones that are on the entry, so they're going to replace the computers you have in the computer lab?
Yeah.
Is that what you're?
The computer lab we have, we have gotten our, yep, absolutely. In fact, when we got them, they were already actually a used device. So I think they're nine or maybe 10 years old.
Okay.
And they're starting to kind of fail or whatever.
Absolutely.
Yep.
I'm just curious.
No. No.
For clarification.
No, good question. Yep, 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 for sure.
Another question. What happens to those computers now that they're?
You know, we're really fortunate. We have recyclers, um, that we are in contact with. Um, many of which actually, uh, will do, will take things for free. Um, we, I did one year, uh, group down in Wis- uh, on Alaska, Wisconsin. But there was a charge with shipping. There's actually a group that comes out of Nebraska. They do it for free. And then the best part is you get a certificate at the end that says that they have destroyed all the hard drives. So any of the data that is on any of these devices gets destroyed. So it's, it, that's really a, a wonderful, uh, thing to have. Because it, it, it did cost. I mean, it was over $600 that we were charged that one time.
I was just wondering with the Blanden thing and the program through the Blanden, is there any way to allow these to be used by families that maybe don't have one?
Yep, so here's what is part of the Blanden plan, and that's kind of a separate thing. I'll probably talk about that in the fall because we're going to actually have that, um, distribution. The Blanden grant actually, uh, comes with 50 devices that we can distribute to families in the community and other organizations in the community, uh, who might be disadvantaged economically, maybe even skills-wise. Maybe it just doesn't have the assets to, to go out and purchase a device. So we're actually going to be looking at doing a distribution or whatever in the, in the fall.
We can't do those with?
Problem with that is our devices, we have to wipe them completely to zero. And then the person that purchases it is actually on the hook for putting all the software on and everything. So, yeah, because there's been people that have asked about even purchasing their own, you know, MacBook or whatever. We have to wipe it down to nothing and it's kind of costly to, for them to put it back on. So, yeah, good question.
Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor. All in favor of approval of the 1920 Dell Chromebook quote for the elementary lab, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. And consideration to approve the 1920 MacBook quote for elementary staff devices.
I'll make a motion just there.
Second.
Motion by Katie, seconded by Anna. Any other discussion?
I just have a question about the valid date. It's already passed. It hasn't validated until May 10th.
Maybe a typo because the quote date is May 17th. And it came from Apple. They, they updated this. That's why the old one is next. But yeah, you're right, that it would. Amy, do you know in the top sheet, it says quote date is May 17th and then the valid date is May 10th? That wouldn't make any sense.
No, that, I, I don't know why that, that looks like that.
They might have just not typed over it because it looks like the, the last quote date was.
They didn't change it.
Yeah, they probably didn't change the date from the original one. I added two in. I had to add two devices in because of an addition of a staff at the elementary school and then.
They want the sale. I'm pretty sure they'll work with us.
Like 30 days.
Something to be aware of.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
So we have a motion, the second on the floor. Uh, uh, with, with Bill's statement about that, we just need to be careful. We can, uh, get that for the quoted amount. Having said that, all in favor of, uh, the MacBook quotes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve the 1920 fee schedule including a 10% meal increase.
Yeah, this isn't Cannon Falls necessarily saying we want to increase our lunches by, um, 10 cents. There are federal guidelines that we have to follow and we have to hit a max by a certain year, 2022. Um, I was proposing 0.5 cents, 5 cents a meal. Uh, but after looking through it, and Lori does a really fancy calculation sheet that comes from the government, um, 10 cents is where we need to be at. So it would be my recommendation to pass this because if you don't, when we get to 2022, the, the increase is just astronomical and parents can't take that kind of hit. So it would be my advice to do 10 cents a meal.
Make a motion to approve. Motion by Mike. Second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Katie. Katie on the second. Other discussion? We seem to, we are required to intermittently raise the price.
That's correct. We have to stay with that federal guidance. We're not even, you know, negative. We're doing really well. I know a lot of people have questions about kids not having lunches and things like that. We don't have those problems here. We even have an angel fund that is set up for kids if a family loses a job or something like that. We're really fortunate in our district that we don't run into those problems. So, um, this is just kind of one of those things to, to keep up with the federal guidelines.
Yeah, so the calculation that you mentioned that Lori has is really kind of on the overall picture.
That's correct. So that people don't get, you know, you get that last one and they have to jump at 68 cents or something like that. That's too much for parents.
Okay, motion, the second on the floor. All in favor of the 10, 10-cent meal increase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consideration to approve an extended leave of absence, uh, under statute 1228.46, starting July 1.
Um, this is for Brian Swanson. He has asked for what we used to call a mobility leave. It is now, um, considered more the state called an extended leave. Um, it can be up to five years, typically three. Um, there's a lot of, you know, things in the contract that cover this. He has every right to do this. Um, it is a little late in the year. I know some of you have heard some concerns about that. Um, but we have posted internally, so we're ready to go. Uh, if you approve this, we can post it tomorrow. Um, it would be my recommendation to pass it. You've approved all the others that have come through with mobility leave. So that would be my recommendation.
Look for a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Katie, second.
Second.
Seconded by Anna. Other discussion?
Can you explain the mobile, like, the leave, perhaps?
It's very clear in the contract. Basically what it says is if you do something outside of education. So a teacher can't take a extended leave or a mobility leave to go teach in Lakeville or try a different teaching position. I think some could even argue if they went to go teach for a college, something like that. Although that gets a little iffy. I think you could say, I'm, you know, going to go to work as, be a professor for two years. Uh, people usually try different career paths and then bring what they've learned from other, other careers and typically bring them back. We've had people that have left for ministries. We've had people leave, you know, for all kinds of different reasons. Uh, but typically the idea behind is they have to keep up their license and they have to keep up their staff development. They have to still, you know, become a great teacher when they come back to us. But the idea behind it is some, you know, thoughts that if they go out to learn something else. Um, and in this case, it would be Mayo Clinic or something like that and bring those skills back to our students, that they are learning something as well.
Okay.
So, you know, if you, if you don't like the language, unfortunately, to change it out of the contract is quite difficult because there's statutes out there. Um, so it can, it can get kind of difficult.
So on the seniority scheme of things, do they keep progressing on seniority throughout all this?
Don't progress necessarily, but they do keep their seniority.
They stay the same?
They stay right where they're at. So, um, they have up to five years to decide if that's something they want to do or not. Um, I believe currently we have three teachers out on a mobility leave.
And do we, do we pay anything?
Nope, we do not.
It's just you get, you drop back when, like, you, is there like a limitation on when you can, um, like when you have to notify us by if you're coming back?
Everything's very clear in there and I think the date is February 1.
If you're planning to come back the following.
Well, we have to have that because that's right around reductions time.
Absolutely, no.
You know, if you've got a, you know, teacher coming back and there might be some changes there and things like that, so.
Thank you.
So does this put us in any kind of a bind as far as staffing is positioned because it's come so late in the year?
It could and it's, it's math. I mean, that's certainly a concern. Um, Mr. Hodges has magic dust. He tends to get us some very good candidates. Um, he's found science and math, you know, very late in the year. He tends to do a really nice job with interviewing. And being so close to cities, I think we can still recruit a few. Our area where we're having trouble is special education. Uh, we still have an open position for that, but, um, I, I think you'll be okay being it's still May. If this was June or July, I, I don't even know if we would have put it on the agenda, to be honest. You know, it's just too late.
Yeah, because worst-case scenario, you're using licensure to move people around.
Correct. Right, right.
Okay, we have a motion, the second on the floor. All in favor of approving this extended leave of absence, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie.
No, it's not listed on here that we're going to go hire a 1.0 math. I don't know if we maybe just missed that. Um, but you guys are aware that we will obviously be filling this position. Typically right below this, we have a line that says approval to hire and post and hire.
You could add that now if you want.
We could, um, add that now or add it at the end. Which do you prefer?
Doesn't make any difference. Let's add it right now and take care of it.
I, I just soon have a vote on.
We will call that 7A. Uh, consideration to approve.
They hired a 1.0.
A 1.0 math. A 1.0 math teacher. Do I need to go any deeper than that?
Nope.
I think we did it. So I'll need a motion for us to continue on the hiring process with that, with that math teacher.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Katie.
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, number eight, consideration to approve a 1.0 FTE ninth grade physical science teacher contract.
Yeah, we were lucky enough to hire Riley Burkheit, I believe is how you say his name. He's doing a long-term subbing position in Hayfield right now and Tim highly recommends him and I very much enjoyed getting to know him. He signed his, he's ready to sign his contract and everything's ready to go. So it'd be my recommendation to approve.
Tim, would you like to say anything? You're.
Uh, he's already started working on stuff for next year, so he's really excited to be here. What's, please, please do. Please do. And I, I believe his last name is, his last name is pronounced Bukheit. Bukheit, yes. Yep, German, yep.
We have a motion by Mike and a seconded by Katie to approve this contract. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Welcome aboard Riley. Consideration to approve a 1.0 PE health teacher contract for 1920.
I'll let Tim pronounce her name as well.
This is Erica Sharm, Sharmick.
Yeah, you did better than I did.
Yeah, sorry, I, I couldn't get just easy names this time, but. She is a recent graduate of Winona State, so she's very excited to be here also. She came up a couple of weeks ago and we did a little tour and she met the other PE faculty and she's, I'm pretty excited about some options that she has for, for PE and health this, this coming year.
I'm sorry. No, that's high school. Remember Kathy Ila moved down to the elementary, creating an open position in Tim's building.
So how many applicants do you get for jobs now? It seems like we've been told it's dwindling.
Special ed was tough, specifically for the position that we were hiring for. We had a couple of applicants, but they were really more interested in elementary special ed. But I think we got a good person and, and that one, I, I think she's on the agenda today, right?
Yep, we're coming up to that.
So for Riley's position, I had one applicant. But fortunately I had a really good recommendation from the principal in Hayfield. He and I are, he, he refs football, so I see him all the time and, and I see him all the time at our HVL principals meeting. So he gave a really good recommendation for Riley. For PE, we had quite a few more. So we had about 12 for PE this, this go around. So it kind of depends what the position is. A few years ago, we had a social studies position and I believe we had 60 or 70 applicants for that. But we're starting to, we've been really lucky in getting just a few applicants for our positions and being able to, you know, to get good people with just a few applicants. We're starting to see it becoming much more difficult to find applicants. And maybe it was just this year, I don't know. Maybe it was just the positions we are hiring for. It's a little different hiring at the middle school and high school than it is at the elementary because of the licensure requirements. So that really does, it is a limiting factor for us.
Okay, consideration to approve that 1.0 PE health teacher for next year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Katie, second.
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve a 1.0 FTE elementary teacher contract for 1920.
Yeah, we're going to award this to Laura Martins. She really wowed the entire committee and then when I met with her as well to talk contract, just very, very impressive. She will be one of our new fifth grade teachers. And so my recommendation is to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Mike, second.
I'll second.
Second by Katie. Other discussion?
With this, I, there's been a lot of movement of teachers.
There has.
Can you give us a rundown?
I sure can. I didn't bring out my notes, but yes, we've had Sue Samson moved into the first grade position, creating the open ATSS position. We then had Katie Nye. She moved into third grade. She was currently in fifth grade. Fifth grade opening now is gone to Laura Martins. So that's kind of where the shifting went within the elementary. And that's why it's so important that we get those posted. Even Brian's position, I posted internally and I did that and I put very clearly on there, this is after board action and all that. But now tomorrow we can post externally and not have to do that waiting for the internal movement because even in special education alone, we had four different moves and at a week each. And then you have to go out and post it as well. It really creates, I mean, these were back in January when these people were moving around. So it takes some time.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor to approve the elementary teacher contract. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve a 1.0 ATSS teacher contract for 1920.
Yeah, I feel so fortunate that we have someone that's coming to us in this position that's so passionate about reading. She has a reading licensure, a principal licensure, a superintendent licensure. She's 15 credits away from her doctorate. She believes in literacy and all that it's composed of. So I'm very impressed with her as a candidate. Her name is Andy Matre, M-A-T-R-E. Hope I'm saying that correctly. And we hired her today. So we're really excited to have her on the agenda and she wanted to be on the agenda tonight as well. So it'd be my recommendation to approve Andy.
Motion?
So moved.
Mike, second.
Second.
Second, Anna. Discussion? So tell me again, ATSS was at one point in time a position that was funded by MDE for at least a year's time?
No, you're thinking RTI. That's funded through, yeah. We've got two RTI teachers, which is kind of through what you're thinking is the literacy aid money. That may or may not be there. Walls, I think we'll keep it for the next two, four years. ATSS is actually through, kind of through special education. You can't be in special education to receive ATSS services, but it's designed so that kids stay out of special education. It's that intervention type things, a lot like RTI and that's why they get, people get them confused. But it allows you to get those kids in there, get those interventions they need before escalating to special education. It's designed to keep kids out of special education if possible. We have two ATSS positions, we have two RTI positions, and we have one Title I position.
Katie, we have a motion to second on the floor to approve the ATSS contract for the upcoming year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Just to be clear, she's the reading ATSS teacher. Lee McNerlin is your math ATSS teacher.
Consideration to approve a 1.0 FTE special ed teacher contract for 1920.
We are going to award this to Courtney Hobel. You may know that name. She's been with us for years. She's remarkable. She's been with GCD. We are stealing her from them and Sherry's not too mad about it. But it's a difficult position. You know, she feels like she's part of our team and wants to be on our contract versus being a part of GCD and not, you know, having to leave and go to their meetings and things. It just feels like she'd be part of our family. So she's kind of been waiting for the right position to open up in this one. We are so excited. I mean, we went through the interview process, but we were so happy because we know her so well. So it would be my recommendation to approve Courtney Hobel for this position at the elementary.
Okay, motion?
So moved.
Anna on the motion, Katie on the second. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve a 1.0 FTE special ed teacher contract for 1920.
Okay, and this name, you're also going to know Ann Anderson, Ann Consinius, as some of you know. She has been on and off subbing for us for 17, almost 18 years. Kind of just decided that, you know, she wants to use her special ed degree. We had an ASD opening and that's something she's really, really interested in at the high school. It's a very small caseload, specifically kids that she's very interested in. And again, Jennifer Tim interviewed her, Sharon was a part of that. Everybody agrees she's a great match for the team. And so it'd be my recommendation to approve Ann Anderson.
Okay, look for a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mike, second.
Second.
Second by Bill. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve a non-renewal of a probationary teaching position.
Yeah, this teacher was with us for this last year. It is our recommendation to do a non-renewal of Natalie Rut.
Sorry, read this.
Yes.
Yes, it should be in your packet.
Resol, do it. Do the motion first.
Does that need to be?
You can grab a motion first. That would probably be the right way to do it.
This is, but this is a.
Is it a resolution then?
Resolution.
I haven't seen it yet.
Yeah.
That's a non-renewal. Okay.
Yep.
So we need a motion to approve the non-renew?
So moved.
By Mike?
Second.
Second by Anna.
All right. Resolution relating to the termination and non-renewal of the teaching contract of Natalie Rut, a probationary teacher. Whereas Natalie Rut is a probationary teacher in the independent school district 252. Be it resolved by the school board of independent school district number 252 that pursuant to Minnesota statute 122A.40 subdivision 5 that the teaching contract of Natalie Rut, a probationary teacher in independent school district number 252 is hereby terminated at the close of the current 2018-19 school year. Do I keep going?
No.
That's it. So roll call. We'll start with you, Mike.
Yes.
Katie, yes.
Yes.
Anna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
That passes by a 5-0. Thank you. Consideration to post and hire special ed teaching position for 1920.
Obviously we need to hire for this position, so it'd be my recommendation to us to do that. This position has been open and again, we don't have any candidates yet. So we'll reach out to Sherry Johnson. Hopefully she can help us as well and really recruit quite hard for this position.
Katie, need a motion to post and hire?
I'll make a motion if you need.
Katie on the motion, second.
Second.
Second by Bill. Other discussion?
How many, how many different types of special ed positions are there?
Oh, you could go on and on and on, but there's nine main ones. You've got LD, EBD, ASD, DCD, autism spectrum. There's speech and language, which is a different license. I could go on and on. But nine main categories that we tend to put kids in, but OHI could be serviced under different people. You've got the whole 504 type thing that isn't special education, but can be tied in.
How many different licensures are there?
I think the nine are the main ones. Not all of those licensures can you get in the state of Minnesota either, so it's, it gets really difficult. We can't even get graduates because there aren't programs out there either. Wisconsin really helps us out. They have great programs at their colleges. Encourage your kids to go into special education. There's jobs there.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor, all in favor of post and hire the special ed teaching position, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve staff development plan and budget and the annual review of 425.
Yeah, all of that is attached. They're really good. The teachers run this program. I know Katie, you sit on the program or the committee as well. So if you have any questions, I could probably go to Katie or myself. Tim is in here as well. It, it's a really well-run program. Their budget is very in line. They don't go over. They do a really nice job. So if you have any specific questions, I think that's an easier way to answer them. Their staff development plan goes into the world's best workforce. As I looked through it, I didn't see any big changes, Katie, where there are anything.
Well, I wasn't able to be at the.
Okay. I didn't see any.
And I didn't, when we had talked about it at the previous meeting, there were no big changes for this coming year.
There's just, there's some long-term goals they're really working towards, which I think is good. And PLC development and those kinds of things. So I think overall the program has been going so well. It's why they're not changing a lot of things.
And did they decide to go with the speaker mid-year?
Yeah, so there will actually have two speakers. We'll have one.
At the beginning?
During workshop week, excuse me, and then one, I think it's the March.
Yeah, they talked about as like a boost in the middle of the year to rejuvenate the, what you get at the beginning of the year when you're excited to start out.
And I think they were also talking about inviting other local districts to, to send people to the Ken Williams presentation in March though.
But they're very well, well-run group. They're a very well-run group, Erin.
Look for a motion to approve the staff development plan and budget and the annual review of 425.
I'll make a motion too, please.
Motion by Katie?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consideration to approve the 1920 fall head coaches. That's on your very last page if you'd like to review.
You notice the only change, and Jake sent out an IC email, I thought on that too, is Heidi Zinnman, when she resigned, Morgan Schwartz stepped up and we're very, very thankful for that. She led an activity day and I think Tim said she had like 15, 20 kids there.
25.
25 kids interested in cheerleading. So Morgan really draws when teachers coach. The kids know them so well and I think that really helps. So we're really happy Morgan stepped up to the plate. She's going to do a great job.
All of these folks were.
They're great.
On our list last fall as well, weren't they?
One other note is Tim Langdon was a one-year intern because the coach resigned basically two days before the season started. And so after evaluation of Tim Langdon, we, he did a very nice job with the boys. So we're recommending him staying on as full-time.
Look for a motion to approve the fall head coaches? Motion by Bill?
Second.
Second by Anna. Other discussion?
What are the numbers on the rest of them?
You know, I did see final numbers. We haven't had Schwartz sign up night yet, so we won't know those quite yet. But activity day is a way for people to kind of see where their interests are at and things like that. Our sports activity, I believe, is in August.
Yeah, it'll be.
Yeah, so we won't know.
Right around the 1st of August.
Yeah. Yeah, it's always nice to see those.
But all of those tend to have pretty.
Fall is good.
Pretty good numbers.
Okay, we have a motion to second on the floor to approve the fall head coaches. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. This was turned into a, a discussion item. I'm not sure how much to discuss either, but we should probably lay it out there. There was some conversation at a facility meeting that Mike and I attended, I don't know, two months ago, six weeks ago. And we seem to accumulate more than we let go. And so we're constantly having issues and I think of truth be known, our facilities guy said, sometimes things just show up. We don't know where they come from. We don't know where to put them. And so it's just like as you age and at your own homes, you accumulate more than you let go. So the conversation at that meeting, Mike, maybe you want to take it over from there.
Well, I, I, I don't know if Dave's plans and I, I think there were some meetings today, so I'm not sure if I can speak in our school or not. But Dave's idea was to take some portable storage pods and put them underneath the grant stand and then have each pod available to each individual sport that utilizes that whole area to try to clear up some space in the concession stand, get rid of some of the stuff in the field house. So then each coach would have access to their own individual pod and things like that. So I think it's very preliminarily informational at this stage, I think would be a clear way to term.
And then after our meeting today, in Dave's defense, he wasn't aware that the truck and plow, he thought it had to stay in the concession stand area and in reality, it really should be at the bus garage. And there's plenty of room down there. Andy was gracious enough to open up that room. So we had no idea, you know, that's a 20 by 30 area that can now be converted into storage. And, and that's what it was designed for. But when you buy this equipment, like a truck and a plow, you want to take care of it and you want to have a place for it and all those things. Dave just assumed if the bus garage was packed. And so when we talked to Andy, he was very gracious to say, yep, we'll put it up front. It'll be out of our way. It can be sheltered the whole time. When we use it in the winter, Dave likes it put in his dock area, so it's easy access. You know, we would never go back to that area. So there might have to be some shelving and things like that. But the reason why I had said that I would deny it is just we can't afford it. I mean, we just, we've been denying things that are for kids. And so when things come through that are, seem extra and it seems like there's other solutions, but like I said, I don't think Dave knew that he could move that truck and plow down there. So we had a great meeting today. I think it went really, really well. And the solution was had. It doesn't cost us anything. And so that's what I'm always looking for is, you know, for Tim. And so that's what I'm always looking for is, you know, poor Tim has come up, he needs more tables for lunch and those kinds of things, I mean, that's probably a higher facility need than, than the pods. And some of the superintendents that had the pods, they're not climate-controlled, so when you put things in them, they get kind of just mucky, like anything outdoors would. So there's pros and cons to it. I don't think it's ruled out, but we won't need them for next year. We just came up with a different solution instead that's for free, so. But I think it's a good, good conversation and it's, you may still see it again in a couple of years, I don't know. But right now, to, to clear out a, I believe you said 20 by 30 space, it'll be helpful.
Well, in the long-term, if we're seeing donations that we don't know where they're coming from, are we just gonna keep keeping everything? Or do we have a policy for how we...
We are, we're creating that now.
I mean, I, I just, I've been involved with other organizations where there's a gifting policy and if it's stuff that we can't use, they release us to sell it or to give it away to someone else because I don't think we should be paying for storage of stuff that we don't need to be storing.
Or do we need it all? Like, do we need everything that we have?
I think we're going through a lot of things. I mean, with this new furniture thing through the whole district, there's going to be a, a day where the community can come by, old desks, old things, all of it's going out there. You have to offer it back to your taxpayers first, that's the rule, even if it's a dollar or 50 cents, whatever. We'll have that day, all of those items will be out there. Dave has a stockpile of things that are gonna go. Jake is going through a lot of his things, things like that too, so. Yeah, we do have a gifting policy and you actually do have to accept everything that's given here. So we always tell people, keep your things until the board has accepted it. Because when you, you vote on those in that consent agenda. And so that has really helped us say, not that we don't want your treadmill, but it hasn't been accepted yet, that kind of thing. And then people usually find a different home.
So there's really a very real problem that we're having with our storage of our stuff.
I wouldn't call it a, a real problem. The biggest one is the mat rats donated some beautiful new wrestling mats. We are now talking to them, we're gonna put those in a hoist, is what they call it, you know, the ones that lift up on the wall. That would actually solve the majority of the problems because here are these two beautiful mats and they're expensive, but they need to be not in the ground and in one of those rooms. And so today at our meeting, we talked about getting a hoist and the mat rats, you know, would probably be willing to donate that next year as well. So I think we, we created a lot of solutions today, I was really happy to hear that, so. You might see it again with the new superintendent, but I, I, I think we've got the problem solved right now.
Okay, we're nearing the end here. Before I adjourn, I, I made a commitment to the Public Works at a meeting last fall when they asked about the lights at John Birch Park. And apparently, we have not discussed the lights or the, the cost of lighting that, that field for our high school events down there. And at least one city council member thought it was time to not only engage in conversation, but make a commitment as to what we were gonna do. And at that Public Works meeting, I was there for something unrelated and we had a lot of open discussion about it. I said absolutely, we would carry that conversation to the board. There was a dollar commitment that was thrown around, but in talking to the Public Works Director, before we'd ever commit to anything, the conversation would be, just what are you paying in the beginning on this? And where should we be? Now, there's conversation that we're having with the CCC and the Shepherd Center, which is, I feel unrelated to it, but we need to continue conversation with the city about the use of their facilities, the use of our facilities for the greater good of our community. So I just want you to know that Mike is probably gonna continue to engage as the facility guy.
And I would just encourage you guys to please get Dave, Jake and I involved. When these things come up, I know nothing. Jake today knows nothing and so when city council's reaching out to us, it's really uncomfortable for us. So I just, I really want to encourage you, if there is gonna be a topic like that at Public Works, get one of us to be there with you, even though you were there for a different matter. It's getting very complicated. The calls I'm getting are very, I don't know that that's even a topic right now. Jake does not know that that's a topic right now.
Well, I, I don't know that it should be if, if they were tasked with getting us some numbers. I agree with you wholeheartedly, our, our power is in the group, not in an individual reaching out all by themselves, so. Might have been an error on my part, but at the same time, they, they seem to want some action nearly immediately and we're not ready for that kind of conversation.
I think it was discussed at that last facilities commission, or at least it was thrown out there as a possibility that this is on the horizon and you weren't there, right?
Yeah, but it wasn't in the minutes, we looked through them today, Jake was there.
Yeah, that's possible.
Jake said, we must have missed it.
I don't know if it was taken minutes.
But Jake didn't remember it either. Dave isn't quite as concerned about it, but you're stuck with the CCC, Mike's been really helping us with that. I'm glad you turned that back over because if Dave doesn't know, we can't help, you know, if we don't know. And so I just encourage all of you, you're all so helpful, that if we don't know there's a stuff that's being missed, it just creates an awkwardness when people call us because we feel like they, we should know. And like, I honestly have no clue what you're talking about and it, it causes some awkward moments for the staff here. Please and thank you.
So the next time we meet with them, most probably would be with a representative?
Sure. Probably Jake or somebody, yeah.
Jake or Jeff or whatever, just to see what their considerations are. They did throw some numbers out, but at the same time, we're not ready to commit to anything until we have an open discussion on it, but it seems to be a real hot button for them right now.
Do you want us to get that on the 24th agenda since you only have one board meeting in June?
Could, could.
I'd be wise to do that.
If I read that council member, they'd like this all signed, sealed, delivered by July 1 and it's kind of like, we're really, seems like a rush to me, but...
Oh, we're waiting on a lease too.
Okay. More of a discussion item.
First, what action do we take until we know what they want?
Yeah, exactly, so.
Cart horse.
Right.
Okay. One more item, we're having a, a retirement get-together at Artisans on May 23rd, as I recall.
That's right.
We have a multitude of people that are moving on, moving forward, so just throwing that out for remembrance so that if you're able to make that May 23rd, it begins, I think, at 3:30 at Artisans and we have some great people who have decided to move in a different direction or retire in.
It should be, it should be nice. And if you come kind of at the beginning, we recognize all the teachers and things like that. You're welcome to come and go, you don't have to stay, but it's not come and you stay. But it is nice if you're there at the beginning, I know they always think it's neat when the school board members are there.
Yeah. What day is it, 23rd?
Thursday.
And does that have any relativity to us at all? Yes? Copies, yes, I read it.
That's also on Thursday, starting around 3 o'clock at the cemetery, and the staff will be putting this up.
So that, that was a project that was led by Nick Leterny. And it's to honor our Cannon Falls veterans. So the EA funded the project, so they paid for clay, glaze, all the other parts that go with that. And the staff took their time to put together a little over 400 of those that will be put out and the little white tag on it will have the name of one of the veterans. And so the, the goal is that every year, we'll put those out around Memorial Day and they'll be collected back and that'll be an ongoing project that we'll do for the veterans in the community.
Is it really nice to store them?
Mike Dahl.
We're gonna put a, we're gonna put a pod back there just for that.
He loves to get me going. You can't help yourself, can you?
Okay, informational meetings, we now have another item on our agenda, we want to speak to the light issue, but the next board meeting will have the revised fiscal year 19 budget, K8 math curriculum discussion. And anything else the board members might want to bring forward, please contact Beth or Lori to have things put off.
Anything else for the good?
Bob, can I interrupt for one minute?
Sure.
There's one thing that I'd like to mention, I think this is a pretty special deal. This year, we have a National Merit Scholarship winner. Graham Pearson was selected as a National Merit Scholarship finalist. That puts him as one of only 15,000 students in the nation to, to get that award. And only half of those students that are National Merit finalists receive scholarship money and Graham was one of the students who received scholarship money. So Graham is in some pretty rarefied academic air as a high school student, so I'd like to congratulate him. And he just happens to be, along with Molly Bowen, one of our two Hall of Fame winners for, for the school year, so.
Thank you for sharing it.
Okay, team, not hearing anything else, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mike, second. You guys want to stay?
I know it all night.
I'm joining.
Yeah, Bill, on the second. Other discussion? All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?